Call a meeting to order at seven o'clock. Roll call.
Derek Schub.
Sean Riley.
Randy Snead.
Erica Parton.
Derek Bowns.
Lisa Mullany.
Ed Marcus is not here tonight. Stand for pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from January 18th, 2023.
I did correct the spelling of Erica's name on the very first. Under the minutes, it said parting instead of pardon. I don't know if they made, but Ed cut that one, so.
You need to correct them. They're showing that I missed here and I was not.
Oh.
I kept thinking, was he here? He wasn't.
I thought he was.
That's the first meeting I've missed in a long time.
So we have anything on the minutes yet? Yeah, I know. Everything, this thing is, the whole system's running slow tonight.
Our RTC has been down and slow, and I don't know what's going on, but it's getting wearing on my last nerve. Well, I think some of our problems are moving stuff, and it's just, I don't know. Something's gotta give, because I'm getting kicked out of stuff when I'm working on it. My phone goes dead in the middle of the phone call. I didn't hang up, I'm honest.
Why do you guys like that? Mine worked right up.
These computers, they're naturally slow, but they're super slow tonight.
Did you read them before, you think?
I did.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'm just, I can't get it to pull up.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 18th, 2023. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose.
I abstain. I was not here.
You won't abstain. Citizens input. Mr. Hillbrand, do you have something you need to say, or?
No, I just wanted to see, make sure I was up to date with what you guys had going on.
Okay.
But I know that you guys are all aware that Itamco Building is listed, and we continue to get interest on that building, but it's a lot of building. It's a lot of money, so it's not going anywhere. And we're cognizant of who's asking also. I want to leave any fears of that, too. There is a lot of battery with the electric vehicle. That's probably our most popular site request right now, are things with batteries and that. We're cognizant that that may not be what communities are looking for.
That's probably one, a few buildings in the area that is big enough to probably do that kind of a job.
Exactly. And then I did have some interest in your downtown. It's a small manufacturer. Talked to Chris Van Dyne about some space, so we'll see what comes of that. Argus is still on.
How much room they need? 5,000 square foot.
How much is the meat in our building?
But it has to be a bar of food. It's food manufacturer.
It's got a kitchen. It's got, it's, it could be.
5,000?
I can't imagine any other building in town that's any bigger than that, I guess, in the downtown.
With the garage and everything, you just knock the wall out between the garage.
Does it have a loading dock? Because that was another request.
Nobody has an open access to an alley that you can put a dock on.
194 South Michigan.
Get with Mark and see if that might work. All serious aside.
Yeah, it's a building that we own, and we've been kind of kicking it around. I mean, if anybody was serious about it, we might kick it a little harder, but I mean, it's just set in there. Which use for, right now, non-for-profits use it and different things, but.
We rent it as a hall type thing, but it's got a, it used to be a car dealership, and it's got a big garage. Maybe a little, you know, a little sprucing up, but the garage part.
Yeah, well, this is a food manufacturer that is small. They would need a small kitchen, an area that could be passed by the health department, and then warehouses for their.
That's almost a perfect building.
It's got a lot of questions.
It was a police station, too, at one time.
I'll talk to Mark after the meeting.
Yeah, please do.
They really don't want it.
Well, I would rather see a business in there than what we're using it for. I mean, it makes, that's common sense. If we can put a business in there, it's miles ahead of where we need to be, so.
Yeah, it's about 3,000 square feet.
Is that where it is, Jamie?
Yeah.
But it's pretty wide open as far as the front part and the back part.
Yeah, you could add in a little bit to it.
It might, it might satisfy him, and it could be added on to a little bit, too.
Yeah, well, it's work they're looking at. They're downtown, the only thing is they get 53-foot trucks, and they was afraid of everything that Chris had, he'd have to stop downtown traffic.
See, that building happens to have a little bit of a garage door on an angle that goes right into an alley that they could back someone off Michigan Street right into.
Well, it's got.
You could come in that alley, but yeah. It could actually, yeah, maybe somebody come down and look at it.
Someone could put a dock out back, too.
Well, that's 53 footers, but.
You're right, you could back it up.
Okay, okay.
Straight down, and then pull right back out to Michigan.
Yep, that'd be perfect, if all they need is a single dock.
Yeah, the only, for now.
And it's a brick building.
Yeah.
Concrete block covered with brick. Yeah, and we've had it inspected, oh, it's been a while back, but the building inspector.
It's got good bones.
Yeah, since it's, it's a good, solid building, so.
It's a possibility, okay. Great, thank you.
It may not be as big as you're looking for, though.
Uh, they're talking right now 5,000 square foot range, and then, of course, they've got plans to expand on that, but for the time being, it's gonna be.
There is a person that owns the old hardware, or lumberyard right here. No, they don't own the ground. The railroad owns the ground, which is why it's a kind of a hard sell. But the guy that owns it was looking at not selling it, but maybe renting it out and stuff, and maybe that might be something they would look at.
Yeah, no, they are.
Because, I mean, it would definitely be big enough, so.
I would think being our building would fit pretty, pretty doggone good. I think it's worth taking a look at.
Like it always go out.
My experience working at the railroads on that kind of stuff is usually not worth the pain that you're gonna go through.
Well, of course, it's an independent railroad now, but still, they, they're not going around.
Or Falcon Southern still owns it. The railroad just leases it from them.
Oh, they just lease it from them? Okay. Alrighty.
Thanks for that update.
I'll have something more formal here.
Okay.
I'm working on our year-end numbers in our annual report, and as soon as that's finished, I'll be, I'll call Lisa to get on the agenda.
Sure, alright, well, thank you, sir. All business, attorney report.
Don't hate you guys, but I got a fair amount of things to kind of cover. A lot of just letting you know certain things. First thing I'll tell you about is we've got three new ordinance violations filed. That's basically a key or a ticket, if you will, to let us get a piece of the pie or the part of the pot that the clerk's office has for this special fund for municipalities that do ordinance violations. So we always want to make sure we get a judgment before May 15, before November 15. So we got three of those cooking, hopefully that results in something. That results in a lot of money for Cor to be able to do things. I think it goes to his. Enforcement. Police fund?
Police fund, yeah, it's a special fund that's set up until my time, but that money goes to.
I remember, I'd say we're between $5,000 and $7,000 per. Per May and November, so yeah.
That money goes in a discretionary fund that we use for, like, for buying a vehicle, put lights on it, or just miscellaneous things.
So it's a good thing to take advantage of, and we're doing it. The next thing I'm gonna tell you about is there is a lease that we have with MediaCom. It's for a little building out by the water tower, and it's a 10-year lease. It's about to expire, I think, in March of this year. MediaCom has reached out to Lisa and said, hey, we want to renew the lease. They sent us the old lease. I looked this thing over. I don't know where the town's at with this, but it's basically $650 a month. It's what they're paying on it, and opportunity for another 10-year term on that lease. That's what I would propose you go back to them at.
Did it give us any grief or anything, Jamie? No, I think they just fixed up the building. I think they just cited it, made it look a little better.
That's what I was gonna ask, is who's responsible for repairs on the building?
Yeah, yeah.
It's their building, and we send them a bill, it's.
They're basically the.
So like the tower fees every month, so. We also get franchise fees off of MediaCom for the year, so it doesn't amount to much, but it is a little bit.
Well, that doesn't sound like it's a ten-year ago, or you do a lease in the last minute.
Same terms.
We should probably raise our rates like they do our rates for this game, right?
Yeah, that's what 10 years ago. Right now, you're at $650 a month.
Same terms. Same terms. Don't get political on them. Just let them do it. It isn't costing us nothing. We're making money off of it.
Don't matter to me. I don't pay them anyway.
I don't either.
They have a utility bill also, so.
Yeah, okay, so see.
I'm just being up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'll let them know that basically, yeah, we'd be okay with an additional 10-year lease, same terms. The next thing I wanted to talk to you about was Randy Rumpolo reached out to me last week concerning the Sequel bonds. If you remember, we did this back in 2019. I think some of you, Sean, Randy, I think you guys were there. Eric, you probably were too. But we basically set up a bond schedule, issue bonds from the town. Basically, the way this works is that, tell me if I'm wrong, but the fifth money that's come in goes to Sequel. Sequel in turn pays that fifth money right back to pay off the bonds. There were five phases, if you will, set up for these bonds, so there's nothing new. It's nothing that wasn't anticipated, but they're ready to proceed with phase two. It's a two-point, I can't remember how many million dollar.
It actually changed 2.3.
2.3 issuance of new bonds, and again, it was envisioned when we did this back in 2019, and they're just kind of letting us know that, hey, their sequel is ready to go with this. And so again, I just told Randy, I was gonna let the council know. It's really a redevelopment commission. They're the ones that are basically the point man on this, but I just think it's appropriate. The council knows. I think the council does have to approve and give the okay for this, but just, again, let you know that that's coming down the road, and it's coming pretty soon.
Was that in our, was that in our contract as well? I mean, this phase thing was all in that. It's very early agreements and all that stuff. I mean, I'm also sure that this is. We're bound to it.
Yeah, there'll be three more that may come at some point in time.
When we pass an ordinance, but, so as I was trying to tell him, I'm not saying this isn't common, but a lot of times you have company A come in, and they buy their building, and they bring all their personal property on day one. So that's why you give them a 10-year abatement, you give them a 15-year. The reason we kind of did it this way, it staggered, because they were going, being brand new, they were building over time. So just like this, there's phase one that they'll start this year. We'll give them 15 years. It's just starting right now. But like the one they started originally, it had a 17-year cap, so it'll fall off before this one finishes. So we will see some tax benefit. It just, down the pipe, the most they could get out, if everything went to their original plan, everything was A-plus, the most they would get out of it was 12 million.
They're wanting to start phase two, correct? They're wanting to start phase two, correct?
Yes, so in order for them to, the reason they're doing this, because they put the investment in, because it doesn't do them any bit of good just to start a phase without them adding it, because they're not paying anymore to get that money back.
Right, so phase two had some building within, including.
Phase two was equipment.
Equipment, okay, so that goes into the existing building. It's just personal property going in, okay.
And there.
The phase three is another construction.
Yeah, so phase one was a, it was a 15, actually, it was a 17-year, but it was a 15-year, but they're actually ahead of schedule, just meaning the assessed value is higher than what they thought it was. And that could continue the whole way. They just can't, but they remember that they cannot get more than 12 million. That's the maximum that was approved.
And we only signed 18 papers today.
I know, and those, those are basically things that we're going to make sure that those documents, you sign signature pages, we need to make sure that those documents reflect what ought to be reflected before those get circulated or really still out.
Yes, I thought about that after I left.
Yeah, he'll get the, he'll get the documents if he can match them.
There's enough that can be, I'm sure we can get a copy of that thing.
Yeah, well, they'll get the pages until we do.
Okay.
He gets really mad if we send the signature pages back without.
I don't know how we do things.
That's right. We do it right.
It's for the council president to sign, isn't it? And it's already been authored.
Council president, I signed one of the redevelopments. She had to sign most of them also to attest them, or had even a financial page she had to sign, so.
For what it's worth, I mean, we can have a council vote, just to say that once we receive the documentation, everything is according to what we already agreed to in 2019. The documents are satisfactory, that we can release the signature pages from the council, from Randy.
I'll make that motion to send the, once we receive all the pages back and everything on the phase two for the sequel, we will then send the signature pages down to them for processing.
One second, Pat.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to review the documents for the sequel phase two bond issue, and once we've reviewed them and everything is up to specifications, then we will send the signature pages down to them so they can process that. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Okay, next thing I have, guys. I sent this, it's this mortgage foreclosure thing that we got, and I knew this ring a bell, and then when I got to look, and this is the fifth time we've been through this.
This is the third time since I've been on the board.
Yeah, really?
Okay, yeah, it is. It, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time beating this dead horse, but it's basically, the town at one point had some kind of a mortgage, meant $10,000 from this CBD or CDBG revolving loan fund. We've looked at this thing, we've seen it, we've never implemented any kind of recovery on this thing. Time and time again, for the last four times we've gone down this road, the boys just said, fine, we're not gonna be interested in that. All this mortgage foreclosure does is say that we're second in line behind the mortgage company, which is this Deutsche Bank, which I'm sure that's probably the case. But I would basically advise not spending a lot of time, effort, money, attorney fees messing around with this. We've been down this road before. Chances are they get it redeemed, and then we'll see it again in another year and a half.
Derek, I was just thinking, so go ahead, maybe.
Is she trying to sell her house, or?
No. This is a foreclosure, so this means that she's about, she could lose her house if she doesn't get it redeemed. That's what it means.
You'll have to find another lender.
But if she finds another lender, then, you know, that's what happens. It comes to us, and then she finds another lender, and then it comes, you know.
So it's just a lien carrier.
So there were loans back in the 90s that the town gave, or the town was participants in. We still have some loans on a few properties around town, and if some of them had been paid in installments, if you didn't pay them in installments, there was a lien put against the house. You had to live in that house for so many years for some of that to be forgiven. But there is still money owed to the town on some of these houses, and we've forgiven a few. I can, Mary Diaper was one. Jamie, help me out. There's been a few.
Apple.
On Apple Street, there was one that we forgave. So we have forgiven a few, but we've also, we do try to get the money back, because it was money that was supposed to be owed to the town.
Personally, I see this one as, like I said, this is the third time since I've been up here that that's come across. I think it's almost like beating a dead horse.
Well, we don't have to do anything. That's the deal, but anytime something like this happens, I gotta let you guys know. And I'll be honest, I mean, it may even be too late to try to even collect on this mortgage and this.
How much is it, how much is it worth? Do we know? You don't even know what the lien is?
The original amount is $10,000. How much of that got repaid, if any? I don't know that.
I don't believe any evidence, so I think it's been just a lien on that house, and.
But I think what's going on here is nothing about, do we want to collect this? It's only saying, we're second in line behind a mortgage company that's a Deutsche Bank. And I'm saying, we don't need to address this.
If we get it, we get it. If not?
Right, yeah.
We won't. I mean, this won't amount to us getting any part of this.
So if they foreclose on it, Derek, if they foreclose, actually do a foreclosure, she loses it, doesn't get it re.
Correct.
How is that, basically, we're just out?
Then we're out.
We're just basically out.
Right. But I will say that we've been through this in 2009, 2011, 2012, 2019, and I think there were others where we just weren't named.
We still have all the old.
That was the program that they went around, they redid roof society, and that, that wasn't right.
Yeah, I remember when that.
I remember, shortly after I bought my house, I called my grandpa.
Yeah, some of it was for heating and air, some of it was for other stuff. So there were a lot of houses that benefited from the program, but we have since started for, I mean, if, if we don't think we're gonna get any money out of it, we just are like, it's easier to just say, okay, we know we're not gonna get any money. But there are, there is a value in having that lien on a property, so.
Is there a schedule outstanding debt on that program to the town yet? Do we have a schedule anywhere? Do you have an idea what's owed to us on these programs?
No, I mean, we have paperwork, yes, but I don't think it's in a spreadsheet or something that I can get my hands readily on, but I have two file boxes full of folders, you know, so.
If this property were to actually sell, our lien slash mortgage may show up. But again, it's so old that I'm not gonna make any promises.
Well. Houses are, mm, smoking now, I think, so.
Next thing I wanted to tell you guys about, just to remind you that at our next meeting, we're gonna be having a bid opening for the cemetery mowing specifications and the contract on that. Bids are due February 15th. By close of business, so next meeting, we'll open bids. We won't necessarily be deciding on that, so you're gonna have a couple of weeks to get the bids, take a look, if you want to call references, investigate, do whatever you want to do. Just let me know that's coming due. We did get the notice published. That went in the pilot on January 21st and 28th. That's where that's at. Next thing, I just want to let you know, the last meeting, we talked about that Kinsey property, and that's one of those that I had conflict on, this Carmen Post was working on that. I did talk to Carmen, and I said, hey, we kind of had a little bit of discussion about that. Wanted you to kind of make sure you're getting on it. Told her to get in touch with Lisa. Hopefully that happened.
I'm not hurt from that.
Okay.
But that, I mean, she has a vacancy, so. If you want, I can reach out and just say, hey.
Yep, just to make sure that's coming, but I just want to let you guys know that, yeah, I followed through with that. The rental inspection letter, the ordinance with that, I have not touched on that yet. Hopefully have some kind of a information back to you on that at the next meeting. The last thing I had to tell you was that just right before I left the office, I finally sent you guys a draft of the chicken ordinance. I know it's been quite some time.
I haven't looked at it yet.
And that's fine. I don't intend to talk about it tonight, but I do just want to let you know that, hey, we've at least got something for you to take a look at. Thanks to Mark, he found an ordinance, and he actually, I think, put together a fair amount of that. I tweaked it. I sent him, I copied him on that as well. Just a reworking of what we're gonna do there, so I know that there's gonna be some discussion on it. Just let you know that at least we got it off the ground and something to look at in paper form, and whether it's a workshop, whether we want to get into it at the next meeting.
Is this to balance our ordinance book with the, our zoning book with the town?
Yeah, the zoning book wasn't so much out of line, it was just our ordinance is, if I remember right, the zoning ordinance said that it was a variance, and they could move forward with that. Okay, fine, so be it, but the ordinance from the town just flat out said, nope, unless you have five acres, can't do it. So there would still be a process. They would still have to go through asking for the variance. That's the zoning component of this. And then the way that I've kind of put things together is that it would be permissible under the ordinance that we're changing or taking a look at, under certain parameters. I mean, no roosters, maximum of six, gotta have a coop, so on and so forth.
I thought we did too, and I saw that tonight, because I had a citizen call me Monday, wanting to know if they could have some chickens in. I said, no, and I said, wouldn't, wouldn't allow that.
Well, it's the same as now, that's the case, but I thought that intent.
I'm pretty sure we voted on that, and they come back, you know, three to two.
To do what?
To not.
No, no chickens in town, that we were going to.
But I thought there was a discrepancy between the, you said, between the zoning and the.
Yeah, there is.
That's what I thought.
Alright. We had that workshop at night, and we went over that path over there, and we.
We did vote in that one meeting about.
Yeah, I'm sure we voted on that, Derek.
So.
Three to two, because Randy and I were kind of on the fence.
If that's the case, then, well, you can take a look at what I've sent to you, but then we're not even gonna really consider that.
We're just trying to, see, wanna educate you more.
Oh, okay.
Alright. So take a look at it, but we're not necessarily back to the drawing. We're taking a different route.
Yeah, price of eggs, I mean, regular assessed value.
Chicken's gonna be worth a lot of money.
That's money in the bank.
Except they can't have, well, no, it's better to know now.
Well, we, remember, we went round and round, and we were like, we just need a vote.
But I just had a lot of notes about, like, we went with this and the fat, and markets have this, and.
That workshop, we talked about all that. We, we, remember the parameters and some of the things on that map, but we went around and said that we didn't want that there, because.
Well, and I'll even take a step back. We've got new people on the council. So I understand where that vote was back in October.
Yeah.
Whatever it was.
I think it's September.
It went to all the council, I guess, I'm not gonna do any more work on this until I get a feel from this current council as to what anybody has or doesn't want. How about that?
That's fair.
Okay, because I don't. Again, I don't want to go spinning wheels and doing much more work.
No, you're right, Derek. I get it.
So maybe we, maybe you guys take a look at that thing, and then maybe let's have a kind of preliminary vote next meeting as to whether anybody even entertained the idea of chickens in town. If so, great, we can tweak what we got. If not, then, okay, we'll fix the inconsistencies that we have. How about we leave it there?
That's, that's fair enough.
Probably should have a meeting just to discuss that workshop or something.
Let's all add a report.
I was just gonna say, a pretty good term report.
Damn chicken.
Don't you blab it.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the attorney report. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek.
You're welcome.
Lisa?
Yeah.
So in our, on Dropbox, we've got a salary ordinance, but here we don't have one on the agenda.
Okay, that is my fault. I do need you to look at that salary ordinance. I'll get you a copy to sign here shortly. So during the fire territories last meeting, they want to up their part-time pay. It was the only change on the whole salary ordinance, so if you would not mind, I think it was 2023.
Dash one.
Dash one. That would go on a new business, but I forgot about it. I did do it. That would go on a new business, but I forgot about it. I, I did do it, but then I forgot to put it on the agenda, so. Oh, great. So if Derek's got a copy, if maybe I can send him a different copy or something, but you can sign this one.
Okay.
Explain to me the caption of Town of Rivers, Indiana, 2023-02 salary ordinance.
Yep.
And ordinance 2023-01.
So we were changing the salary ordinance so many times in a year, I had to have a way of keeping track of what version we were on. So I guess it should say version 2023-01, or, you know, but.
But wasn't that passed in '22?
The first one, yeah, the salary ordinance for 20, so the other one says ordinance 2023. Yet, or.
It'd say 2022.
Should say 2022.
No, 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 I could say 2023, because we passed it in December for the 2023 year.
Right, but that would still be a 2022 ordinance.
Up here, it is up here, it's 2022-16 or something like that.
Okay.
But down here, it would say ordinance 2023. I guess it should say version 2023 or something. But I have to have a way of keeping these separate, because they keep changing the salary ordinance, so it's like version one, version two, version three, you know what I mean?
I got it.
And so.
But we can't have.
An ordinance and an ordinance.
Well, we can't have 2023-01 and 2023-02 be one document?
It is one document. But this is the actual ordinance number.
Okay.
Okay, this is just the version that I'm on, so.
You're basically, 2023-02 salary ordinance amending ordinance 2022-16, or whatever that, I think is how you wanna caption that.
Okay.
Because ordinance 2023-01, what was that ordinance? Have we already had it?
Yes.
And it was dealing with.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Okay.
I, this is just how it was set up, and this is how they, I guess, yeah, okay, so I, I would put amended here, right?
Yeah, let me do, if this is what's gonna get some.
There's, there's something else in there that's wrong, too.
What is that?
There, where you got, it says 2021 based pay rate schedule, it shouldn't say 2023 based pay rate schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, I see that.
I moved that we tabled this until the next meeting, and then we can make it retroactive, I expect we're first.
That's fine.
That, that way you can, that way you can fix it, Lisa.
Yeah, I, that's the way I did all of last year, so I, they may be wrong, but, I mean, it was a way to keep track of the.
Right, I understand that.
But see, I need a way to keep track of the versions, like one, two, three, you know what I mean?
Right.
Because somebody's gonna say, what, in what, you know, when did we change this, and then I can say inversion.
First of all, yeah.
Oh, there you go. Okay. All right, yeah, I'll do that. I'll, I'll redo it, I'll pass it at the next meeting.
Yep.
Maybe December, we can put amended 24, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
It was just a way to keep track.
Did you send that motion, or Randy? I made a motion to table it till next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to table it to the next meeting, do we have a second?
We'll second.
We have a motion and a second to table the salary ordinance to the next meeting. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, they took care of that. Any other old business? Okay, moving on. New business. I'm not sure if I wanna bring this out or not. Well, Derek, you shut me up if I'm wrong. I called Derek and asked him, and I know this is gonna get some complaints and maybe cause a few problems, but I'm wanting to dissolve the park board.
Basis?
Well, the park board doesn't do that much, of course. The town takes care of the park. And the park board, they have their meetings and they discuss a few things, but you know, what do they, what do they really do for, and then we have a lot, they have a, they get money for this, for their meetings.
Okay, who, who runs the concession stands and that stuff in the summer?
Not concession.
Jamie, are you on that board?
No.
You've talked about. Like at the softball?
Yeah.
Well, you had your park board members doing it, even though they gave the money to the school. I, I don't understand what you're saying, they don't do, my only issue with that, I would have as a citizen, you're taking, you've got people involved now and you're taking that control from them and you're doing it all. So if, if you had problems filling that board, you couldn't find anybody, I can almost see what you're saying. But we've always had that at full capacity, never had an issue filling that board, and they do serve a purpose, I mean, they.
What do they do? I mean, I'm just asking.
Okay, how do you think your park updates got them?
Of what?
The park updates, the grants. That was, that board had to decide what they were doing, with the land and water conservation grant had to decide, I mean, I, I guess I don't know what, what, is there something you want to see out of them more?
No, I just wanted to see it dissolved, because I just didn't feel that they were doing anything to, to.
Well, I mean, and the statute virtually gives them, I mean, that's why, that's why we have a park board, it's set up by statute. I mean, I'm not saying that you couldn't run that, but if that's the case, you might as well run all the boards. But I, you don't wanna do that, because you're gonna have, not a pension.
But at that point, I guess I just see the town does so much of the work there.
But, but the, doing the work in the park has nothing to do with the management of it. I mean, I, I don't take this wrong, I've got Jamie, Jamie's here, Jamie does his job, we might as well get rid of the town board. Jamie does the job. I, I'm just saying, so you see, working for an entity and being the administrator are two totally different things. Because the park board members aren't the ones that are gonna go out and mow.
Right, I know.
They're the ones that are gonna, whoever the president, Ed was the president, he dealt with Jamie.
And, and I dealt with that a lot, and I took care of a lot of stuff with the park. And you, you guys didn't know about that, because that, that was separate.
I guess, my, an empty question in my mind is, I know that Jamie's department lends a lot of just people's time to work on that park department, and that park department gets their own funds for our tax base. And we're paying from the town's tax base to take care of the park, and I, I'm kinda, I'm a little bit turned upside down about not thinking that that's quite correct, uh, how that works. Maybe I'm not totally up to date on if there's something else going on behind the scenes, but I think that the park board, I'll be paying the town's employees if they're out there working.
And, and we do do that partially, um, there's times when I hire part-timers, we'll put a couple out of the park, we'll split a guy, or we'll share. That way, if I have to go out there, it makes up, but sometimes I'll pull those guys to work with me if I need them. So I mean, it, it does balance, it's probably not a hundred percent, but it does balance itself out a little bit. The other thing is, we share equipment, there's times I need their equipment, I'll pull that. Ed, Ed and I have worked a lot of this stuff out over the years between the two of us, and, and you guys probably haven't been involved in it, but, like you said, they have their own budget, they have all that stuff, so I dealt with him on all this.
I just know that when, when, I just, just to kinda follow up, I know that when we were working on at night, we done, everybody done a fantastic job involved in the updates to the parks, they're great. But I know that there was a lot of times that your guys were pouring concrete or doing stuff out there when we had other things going on that maybe put you behind, things in the town, possibly, I don't know, I, I'm asking the question. And that, that part of it just concerns me that, you know, make sure that we're getting an equal balance there or something.
But if you remember, though, we did that as forced labor, and you guys are the ones that told me to save as much money for the town as we can, and that's what we did out there. It didn't really cost the town any money, it saved, saved the town money. All the labor that was spent out there, we wrote it off, I mean, we got, we got paid back from that grant.
That came back to your department?
Uh.
Or just the town?
It came back to the town.
We had to match so much.
Yeah.
Instead of us putting cash up, we were able to use the in-kind donations, what they call it. So his, his dollar, what it costs for us to pour the concrete and do that, we were able to take those matching funds as part of that, that land and water conservation grant.
And those are all settled, now, all them grants and everything are settled, right?
The park grants are.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, the last time, when we done those, the town backed those grants for the park, and I think in all reality, since the park is their own taxing entity, they should be backing them kind of things instead of the town.
Well, you will, but they still come to you to get the funding. I mean, that was why, you're never gonna give them enough money to where they're gonna be saving up to do that $250,000 grant on their own.
Then they should have to pay us back, get payments like a loan, like water, water, just electric or something.
You're looking at it wrong, just because they're their own board, they're still the same.
No, they're their own taxing entity, they get their own funds.
No, no, you're the taxing entity, they just have a, have a tax fund, they get money. It would be the same thing with the police department, you're, they're, you're the taxing entity, they just get those tax dollars.
You determine how much they get.
Yes, it's, they can't go out and set their own tax rate, they are not a taxing entity. They're just allocated under our, our governmental tax fund.
I had that a little bit backwards.
Yeah, they can't go out and set their tax rate, they can't.
We give them a chunk of our, the money that we get. They're just like the street department, you know, or the police department, they get a chunk of what we get. But I think where this came from is, um, not, you know, sometimes there's disagreements between the park board and the town on what can be used for what, or when it, what is going to be used for what, and I just think it, it stemmed from that. But it's, I mean, they are not their own taxing entity, and they, they're never gonna pull in enough money to pay you back, you know, and sort of like the street department, it's just a losing entity, they don't have any funds to.
Yeah, I just, yeah, and I apologize, I had that confused with the type of setup we have between the water department and the electric department. When we do a water project, we don't have the money, we set it up on a loan fund, where the water department pays the electric back.
Right.
Even though it's all our own thing, they have to pay one another back.
But they have.
Those are revenue-based, though.
Yeah. It, it is revenue-based.
And Randy, just to be clear, that when you had talked to me about that, I, I spent about 10 minutes looking, I found usually the statute that created park board, I did not find anything. Not saying it's not there, I'm just saying I didn't find it within the 10 minutes of looking to dissolve the park board, but I would point out that if, if that were to occur, that you've got a situation where there's various parcels of real estate that are owned by the park department, which would probably have to be conveyed as well, uh, back to the town. You wouldn't wanna have a park department owning things with no park board to govern those parcels of real estate. So at the end of the day, I'm just saying, I haven't thoroughly researched that, if this has traction, then I can do more looking into that. But I didn't see the plain, clear, obvious answer to that.
Would I like to, maybe, was you gonna say something?
Yeah, one more thing, there, there's things that the park board can do that the town can't do, is acquiring land, and like, remember uptown, we had to run it through the park board to be able to do, or the park department to do things we did up there, so I think we need to look at all the avenues before we just take that board away, because we might be using some tools for, uh, getting things done down the road.
So we ran that through AC/DC, then we conveyed it over, no?
Redevelopment, bought the one parcel, owned it by the park.
Okay.
I guess I look at this as an oversight. You have, you have another group of people involved, so you're not the only ones, I'm just looking this as, as sitting up there, being out here the same thing. You've got a whole different group of people trying to run something. If something's not run right, then by all means, you have the authority to step, step in, you appoint their members. But right now, it doesn't look like that, that you're the only entity trying to run everything. Let them, I mean, if you've got an issue with something, I can't foresee any other reason why you would wanna dissolve it, you're not gonna gain anything, other than having total control. Which you virtually have that now, because you appoint their members. Any point in time, you can remove, replace.
No, those are some things I was not aware of, I didn't realize we could, I, I thought they kinda voted their own members.
No, you guys appoint them, you're getting ready to appoint a park board member.
Yeah. Well, it's still something I kinda want to maybe think about and maybe do some more research and look into, too, I don't wanna completely drop it, but it's just a thought, so.
I, 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 I agree with you, Randy, on the aspect of, I think we need to look into it further.
Right.
And I, like I say, I have still questions that, thank you for some of the clarification tonight, because I got a little mixed up on some of that stuff myself, so. It just, it gets hard sitting up here when you have other stuff out there, trying to keep track of what's on top of what, going where. And I told, I get everything, but I can also say, just honestly, that, you know, we worked that man's department to death, everything that they've been doing. And if we, you know, just, just an out there, off-the-wall thing, Randy, I'm not, I'm not saying one way or another, just an off-the-wall thing, but if we done away with that, and we're just dumping a whole nother responsibility on that man over there and his employees to try and manage and take care of, where, and I don't know, I haven't been to one of their meetings, I can't tell you what they do.
Right.
But I can't help but think that they do enough work out there that takes stuff off their everyday routines that there is some value there, I don't know what it is exactly, but, you know, just cleaning the facilities and that kind of stuff out there, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know who does all that, so. But I just think it comes to my mind.
Do they appoint all those people, too, then, that they hire?
Yeah, so they had three people that's here.
Yeah.
They had three.
Three, three or four.
At four at one point, with, when.
Ever.
Never it was here, but Jerry, Kevin, and then Kenny, those are park board employees, and then when we get to where the park's done, Jerry stayed on and is helping here. So, and then he just transferred what department?
Ed, Ed and I have handled a lot, he'll, you know, through their park board meetings, he related to me what they wanted done, and then I would work to get those things done. And, and like I said, they had employees of their own, and then if they need extra help or equipment, you know, we'd go out and help or, or whatever needed, so.
Well, given this, let's just think about it.
Well, I, I think that there's two things here, Randy, I think that we need to, again, have another discussion about it, possibly in a workshop or, you know, in a different type of setting. And listening to Derek, I think there may be some follow-up there on the legalities of, if we do decide to go forward, what we need, or what there is there.
Yes.
What, what there is there, right?
There's no way we could go.
I mean, as far as property, land, that kind of stuff.
Okay, so that's the end of that for tonight. We have a park board openings underneath this.
I just, uh, I guess we're going to, um, we have a few people that have applied to be on the park board opening, which of course is your appointment. So, um, I think that they wanted to present those people to the park board, which will be the last of this month to see, um, who they thought might be a good fit, and then they were gonna bring it back to you. So because it's been on the last two agendas, I carry it forward, and I just wanted to kinda give you an update that we do have, um, I believe, four? Yeah, I think we have about four people that have applied for that one position, so.
I will say, I just, yeah, a little bit here, I will say that Councilman Barkis sent an email today requesting that we table this, so they can evaluate it at the park board member and at the park board, and then bring back recommendations. I understand where he's coming with that, but that's giving that board complete control over who they put on their board, and that's, that's an appointment that we, you know, that's going back to Randy's initial question of we need to be putting these people on that board, not them telling us who to put on that board.
It's, it's always the council's appointment. And I, I think what I'm hearing is that they just wanna maybe try to filter through some of these four applicants, and maybe recommend one, two, I don't know if it'll be one, two, or three, or what. But I, I guess it sounds like they wanna kinda take a look or see these applicants, you don't have to do that. It is your appointment, it's always your appointment.
So they just need one?
They need one appointment right now, there's one vacancy, is my understanding.
I'm just saying, we don't do that with any other board. I'm just saying, we don't do that with any other board. You know, police commission or whatever, that's, that's a council decision. Police commission don't send back names, say, well, we like these two people. I, I think that's, to me, I just think that's a.
That's not.
Not, not quite, not quite a kosher way of doing it.
But that's different.
You know, to me, that, that alleviates some of that question that we just had, that discussion with Randy.
Okay. Okay.
That's my thoughts on it.
So let's move on to any other new business.
I've got a laundry list here, some things. I think we touched on this in the past a little bit, but I'd like to get a little more clarification right now, moving forward, but, um, I know we've got some projects coming up for water, uh, water lines on a couple streets here in town. But what's the big picture here for water pressure for the town in general? Because even those of us that have decent water pressure, it still stinks. So what's the plan for, as the town tends to grow a little bit, and we hook more and more units onto these lines, that pressure is going to slowly drop. If we don't have a plan, it points to maybe have water tower somewhere else, or what are we going to do to build pressure, to make this a, a better place to live? Anybody have a plan on that?
Where, where's the water pressure bad at?
Well, my house, I mean, it, it, it takes, I mean, I've, I've got some of the probably better water pressure in town, and it takes, I mean, eight, 10 minutes to fill my sink.
I, I don't know off the top of my head what your pressure is down there. I know, I know there's some problems in town, we're addressing those, but what it is in your neighborhood, I don't know.
Yeah, so I mean, I, and I just assume, I mean, I'm just a block down from.
Eric, how's your pressure?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Are you guys, are they on the same line?
They, yeah, they'd be off the same main, down in that area.
I mean, I have plenty of pressure as far as if I want to turn on a couple faucets at the same time, I've got plenty of water like that. I don't have to worry about spick it, grind it up, because I turn on too many faucets in my house, but, um, but, I mean, I've lived in my life, I've lived a lot of communities, and this by far is the, the worst for water pressure.
This is just your house or this?
Well, my house, yeah. But I don't have any water leak or anything.
No, well, you could have a gallon of ice line that comes to your house that's grown shut.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm writing. You could have a three quarter inch line just down to a quarter.
Quarter, right, because of.
Do you have a water softener? That would help guarantee.
Yeah, and not only that, but have you checked your screens? Because I get pebbles, like lime, lime pebbles in my screens all the time. So I have to unhook them, you know, rinse them out, and then I get pressure right back, so. Check, check it out. Just see.
I have some gallonized lines in my house, and they're, I mean, they're three quarter inch lines.
Well, I don't know.
I've been taking them out.
All my, all my lines in the house are PVC.
We could check the, the mains, throw a hydrant down there and see what the volume or the pressure is. But that tells us the main is good, then it's probably your service line off that or something in the house.
From the main into the house or in the house itself.
Yeah.
All right, well, that was still, that was a question, it's like.
It's probably, that's probably worth doing, Jamie, just getting a pressure check.
And we've done that, I think Joe's actually got it, except last year when he did it, I think he checked all the hydrants because, um, oh, I can't think of her name, Shannon needed that for, for this.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
The fire rating, they went to get for that too.
Insurance reason.
Yeah.
Moving on from that, I've got a question about the Dewey Street and South, uh, Kennelworth Drive Road going out to the new addition out there. What's the plan with that as far as widening? I, I took my truck down a couple different times just to see how those roads fit. Because I know that's where we've got semi-traffic coming in there to go to some of those plants.
That is a county road.
Right.
So Dewey Street is us, but everything Dewey that way is county.
Right. Oh, okay, so, um, south, you mean Dewey Street heading east?
Dewey Street from Kennelworth to Michigan is town.
Okay.
Everything else out that way is county.
Yeah, and that's, I kind of figured that, so that intersection right there then at Dewey, which is also what, 17th Street?
Yeah.
We've got that bermel built out with gravel.
That's county.
Okay, that's county, that's their, that's their baby?
Yeah.
Okay.
Downhill roads there.
So the, then going to the new subdivision that we're building out there, that's county road as well, then that's on them to try, because as I look at that, it's like those houses that sit in our, our, um, well, there for us, or in our, our town terr- territory.
Yeah.
But we're going to rely on the county to improve that street because that couple 300 yards is atrocious as far as getting into that subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, and until that project is more finalized, we're going to pay this year, the county's going to fix that. We've already worked all that out. We're just not going to do it until we're a hundred percent sure we ran all, everything we need to run. Because I don't want to get them to put a new road down and then have to tear it back up.
Yeah, well, yeah, of course. And there won't be a problem with acquiring the, the appropriate width for that road for that turn.
That is not going to be wide.
I can tell you they probably aren't going to dump anything into that because within the next, once that interchange is put in, you won't see truck traffic going that way because you won't be able to get out to 31.
That road's going to close.
Right, yeah, so.
That's a very good point.
And at some point, because they already are making hints, they'll want to try to get us to take that road, I'm sure, past the subdivision.
Right.
But.
Lindenwood, it will be addressed on that west side of 31. That's going to be the entrance to, uh, Echo and, and, uh, Top.
All right.
We're, we're on this side of 31.
Right, right, and you, and that, so that's why I'm saying that they don't plan on fixing that down here rather than basing it down.
Okay, um, and then I talked with Lisa, we've got to do some GIS updating with maps for our.
Uh, like I said, we purchased software, went a couple of years ago, and we're locating water mains and sewer lines, right? And we're GISing.
Okay.
That's.
So, but that, that, that GIS is up to date enough that we have our, our easements and things like that?
There's no easements on that. That's just for infrastructure, water, sewer, electric. That's all that does.
You're actually talking like the beacon from the county. The Maddoxes.
Yeah.
That should be pretty much up to date, everything they've got. Now, there's some easements that may not be reported, nobody knows about, but for the most part, all the easements should be on there.
Okay.
That I can get Jim out for.
All right. Um, and I see your post for this month, that we've got developers looking at eight lots out there. When will we know a little more about that? Do you have a?
Uh, we're in the final stages. Hopefully, we have a meeting this week and hopefully we'll finalize that.
Okay, um, and then you said in your statement that they, we don't have, uh, plans for development on another piece of property for, uh, I don't think it's the 16 acres, you've made reference in here about.
Housing or?
I think it's housing, um.
And it could be, we had talked at one point about, there's a 50 acre parcel we had looked at. Looked at marketing, not actually purchasing, and that's kind of in a, a state holdup. We haven't done much with it. I actually just talked to that guy this week. So it's not, all that is really is just still on our planning side, nothing that's to the point we want to move anything forward.
Are you, are you referencing that report from Mark on the housing for?
Yeah.
Moving forward to the six, so you're talking about north of town out here?
Well, it was probably one of them, I figured.
That's where the 16 acres at?
Well, I thought he also probably meant Roberts. That's the one that I had.
So that was for, that's for.
He says here are eight lots here, and then he says, oh, 16 acres, you're right.
Yeah, so it'd be out north. Yeah, that's been ongoing. We've got, I believe, first right.
Just kind of push that, that's kind of one of those.
We have first right for future.
Serious, we'll push it further.
Okay, um, then with that, the next, I don't know how you guys will feel about this, but I've talked with Cory about this first. I personally would like to see the department try to build a small reserve, uh, reserve officers.
I guess that needs to be brought before the.
Yeah, you should have brought that up earlier.
Hey, I wanted to bring it up here because.
This board has no control over that.
Right.
No.
Okay. All right, well.
Just, that's just the way it is.
All right. Um, and then that wraps up like that.
Nothing else? Okay, claims.
Well, we only had, um, a couple weeks, so Randy, you're going to be very happy. From the 17th to the 30th of January, our claims were only $98,641.51. Now beware of the next set of claims. I couldn't close out January and give you the first of February claims, so.
We may have to do a crew of claims from 1/17, 2023 to 1/30, 2023, in the amount of,
A second.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept claims from January 17th, 2023 to January 30th, 2023 for the amount of $98,641.51. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I got one thing.
Uh-oh.
Just a general comment to the board. The police commission tonight formalized their motion to hire Richard Springer as the fifth police officer for the town, so he comes with quite a bit of experience. We won't have much training involved with him. He comes from Walkerton. He's been a reserve and part-time officer up there for a long time. Uh, he's got about 15 years of experience in that field as a matter of fact, so we were pretty fortunate to, it's kind of a different process than we've normally done, to be very honest, but we had a timeframe that we had to work around some absences of the police commission as well as the police department to accomplish all that. So we finally got that all formalized tonight. I'm just notifying the board that that position is filled, that was approved by the board to fill.
And one last thing before we adjourn, uh, in case anyone's interested, our ambulance has made 38 runs in for the month of January. So it's still a very busy, busy place over there, and Mark can tell you that it's, they, they.
One less than last year.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
It puts a lot of miles on the.
Making it sound like I'm killing people without that.
No.
Motion to adjourn, Gary.
Yeah, a motion to adjourn? Second. They have a second? Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.